Good evening. I'd like to call the April 16th meeting of the Half Moon Bay City Council to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Here.
Councilmember Reddick?
Here.
Mayor Warback?
Here.
You have a quorum?
Pledge of Allegiance. I have one public comment card. If anybody else would like to speak about items not on the agenda, please fill out one of these blue cards and give it to our city clerk. Daisy Sarabia, please.
Good evening, Honorable City Council Members. We want to invite you to our Town Hall next Tuesday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We will be talking about drug use, mental health, and commercial marijuana use, also known as Measure GG in Half Moon Bay. We began to talk about Measure GG last fall when it was just an item on the ballot. Since then, we have seen that commercial cannabis could have tremendous impacts on the community when implemented. We have seen that our concerns have been echoed by community members at strategic planning sessions in previous years. We want to ensure that the community has a chance to learn about and weigh in on a policy that will affect them, and to also start a dialogue about mental health and substance use in the community. At the Town Hall, you are here from Half Moon Bay High School students and community leaders and have the chance to share what you think about Measure GG. We want to hear from you, so we hope you'll join us. The Town Hall will be held here in the Ted Adcock Community Center in the Oak Room, and if you need translation or childcare services, those will also be available at the event. We hope to see everybody there. Thank you.
Thank you, students of Half Moon Bay High. Now, we're going to talk about proclamations and presentations. Joan Dentler is going to talk about what's coming up on the 25th.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Warback, members of council, city staff. Thank you for having me here this evening. My name is Joan Dentler. I'm a field representative and state senator Jerry Hills, District Office in San Mateo. And you may have already heard, I know that I've spoken with Mayor Warback and with city manager Nesbit and, of course, Jessica Blair, about this event that we will be hosting. Senator Hill, Assemblymember Mullen, and Assemblymember Kevin Mullen and Mark Berman will be hosting a state legislative forum next week, next Thursday night. The title is Keeping the Coast Side Connected. And I don't need to tell anyone here about the numerous incidents that have occurred at the coast side in the past several months, which have disrupted traffic, power, communications, and connectivity. The legislators in our district have heard the complaints and have, in order to address some of these issues, we have invited agency representatives from Caltrans, PG&E, Comcast, CHP, and Sheriff Valanis's office. We will also have a series of other representatives that will not be on the panel but will be there available to answer any questions. The senator asked me to make it clear that this is not a finger-pointing or a gotcha forum, that this is more seeking solutions and addressing these incidents and finding out what can be done to keep things from happening again, namely the Comcast outages, the PG&E outages, and, of course, the tunnel closure of March 12. We understand there were several communication issues. I know that we talked with Kevin Rose from the county OES about SMC Alert. So all of these items will be discussed, and the senator and assembly members will be asking these representatives what their plans are for solutions and how we can keep these things from happening again. So I'd like to invite everyone here to attend. I've left a stack of flyers over there on the table. Everyone should have received an e-blast from either Senator Hill or Assemblymember Mullen or both, so anyone who's a constituent probably has already received this information. But I will leave some additional flyers over there. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and we look forward to seeing everyone. I would like to offer a special thanks to Superintendent Jane Euster for opening up Half Moon Bay High School and allowing us to use the wonderful multi-use room that is there. I think we will have a good crowd. I know this is a very, very important issue to the coast side community, and we look forward to engaging with the representatives from these different agencies and finding out what can be done. And legislators have heard, they've heard the issues, and it's time to try to take these out and fix what they can. So thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you, Joan.
I just want to say, please extend our thanks to Senator Hill and the other members of our legislative delegation. Really pleased with the response and look forward to participating, so thank you very
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. I'm looking forward to the meeting. Now, we're going to have a presentation about sustainable Half Moon Bay scholarships. Michaela McMahon, please.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, and Half Moon Bay community. The City of Half Moon Bay is excited to host this year's Earth Day celebration from April 19th from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. This year, it will be held at the Half Moon Bay Library with a new collaboration of local organizations and expanded services. Half Moon Bay invites you to the sixth annual Earth Day celebration with free compost, e-waste drop-off, and document treading brought to you by Republic Services.
Is this the scholarship?
But it's all under the same banner.
Sorry. No, no. We're going with the scholarship.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. In the spirit of sustainability, we're actually hosting a sustainable HMD scholarship also brought to you by Republic Services. We would like to present the winner of the 2019 Sustainable HMD Scholarship tonight. This scholarship is for $1,000, and it awards a high school junior or senior Half Moon Bay student who shows commitment to making our community more sustainable. This year's topic asks students to discuss how they encourage source reduction in their high school or their community. As it is the first year, staff worked on developing the application essay prompt and outreach plan. Outreach included an article in the Half Moon Bay Review posting on various media platforms in a collaboration with high schools in the area. Applications were due on March 15th at 5:00 p.m. Mayor Warback, Monica from Republic Services, and John, Director of Public Works, met as a scholarship committee on April 4th to determine which student to award. I would now like to invite Republic Services to award the winner of the 2019 Sustainable Scholarship.
Thank you very much, Michaela. Mike Mahoney, General Manager, Republic Services of San Mateo County. Mr. Mayor, council members, as you know, we've been into our new franchise almost exactly a year and two weeks or so. One of the new items that we put forth when we went through the procurement process was the scholarship award, and on behalf of Republic Services here throughout San Mateo County and Half Moon Bay, I'm very pleased to be able to present this award to Ryan DeBrow. Ryan, why don't you come up? Thank you very much. I think somebody should take a picture here somewhere.
All right.
Yeah, we'll jump in. Got to do the political shake.
Do you want to get? Do you want to say a couple words?
I'll just say a couple things, then you can jump in. Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. I just want to say real quickly that your family should be very proud of you. I've looked at your resume, and it's unbelievable, you know, for a guy your age. I was very, very impressed, the whole litany of working with the Parks Conservancy, Golden Gate, the Physics Club, the Pacifica Beach Cleanup. It's very, very impressive. You guys should be very, very proud. I think you're going to do very well in whatever you choose to do. So, you want to say a couple words here?
Sure. Just go ahead. All right. Hi, I just, thank you again. Thank you. I guess I thought I would talk about what I'm going to do next, so I'm going to Calholy officially next year, and I'm joining the, or I'm planning on joining the Prove Laboratory, which works on renewable, or just alternative energy vehicles, and they try to break world records with them. So, right now, they're building a solar-powered car that is going to beat the world's land speed record for the solar-powered car. Their next project is they're beating the world record for longest vehicle traveled on a single charge of, so electric car that can have a person in it and longest distance traveled, which I believe is, they're going for 1,400 miles, and I'm hoping I can work on that project, so, yeah.
Thank you. I would encourage everyone to read the essay in the program that you've implemented or helped implement at Half Moon Bay High School. You know, truly very impressive, and your leadership is going to serve you well.
Where can we see the essay?
Hello. We're happy to provide copies to you. Not a problem. We'll send them out to the full council. Thank you.
Well, I read the essay, and it's really incredible, so I was impressed the hell out of me, so it's really encouraging to know that our upcoming generation is as interested and working towards sustainability, because it's really important, and it was a wonderful essay, so thank you, Ryan. Now, we come to the part of the meeting that's supposed to be my announcements, and I found out that I am, in fact, the mayor from last week. She's not here. And before I begin, I wish that we realize that our, Deborah Penrose, council member Deborah Penrose, is recovering from surgery, and we all wish her well. She seems to be doing very well, and I'm sure she's going to be here on the May 7th meeting, but our thoughts go out to her in her recovery. The announcement that I have to make has to do with our Community Services Financial Assistance Grant Program. We're going to be accepting applications for the program, which is for nonprofits, starting now, and we'll be accepting applications up till May 31st. Local nonprofits can apply for grants to support their local activities and programs. Grant amounts will range between $5,000 and $25,000. That's more than last year. And if you're interested in applying, if you go to the Half Moon Bay website slash CSFA, that's the Community Services Financial Assistance Program, the applications are online there, and any questions that you might have, please direct them to Victor Haithan, our management analyst, and his contact information is on the website. So, we really are encouraging nonprofits who are doing good work for our community to apply for these grants. The city council will support you. The next item on the agenda is our city manager update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Members of council. Thank you for having me here this evening. My name is Joan Dentler. I'm a field representative and state senator Jerry Hills, District Office in San Mateo. And you may have already heard, I know that I've spoken with Mayor Warback and with city manager Nesbit and, of course, Jessica Blair, about this event that we will be hosting. Senator Hill, Assemblymember Mullen, and Assemblymember Kevin Mullen and Mark Berman will be hosting a state legislative forum next week, next Thursday night. The title is Keeping the Coast Side Connected. And I don't need to tell anyone here about the numerous incidents that have occurred at the coast side in the past several months, which have disrupted traffic, power, communications, and connectivity. The legislators in our district have heard the complaints and have, in order to address some of these issues, we have invited agency representatives from Caltrans, PG&E, Comcast, CHP, and Sheriff Valanis's office. We will also have a series of other representatives that will not be on the panel but will be there available to answer any questions. The senator wanted, asked me to make it clear that this is not a finger-pointing or a gotcha in a forum, that this is more seeking solutions and addressing these incidents and finding out what can be done to keep things from happening again, namely the Comcast outages, the PG&E outages, and, of course, the tunnel closure of March 12. We understand there were several communication issues. I know that we talked with Kevin Rose from the county OES about SMC Alert, so all of these items will be discussed, and the senator and assembly members will be asking these representatives what their plans are for solutions and how we can keep these things from happening again. So I'd like to invite everyone here to attend. I've left a stack of flyers over there on the table. Everyone should have received an e-blast from either Senator Hill or Assemblymember Mullen or both, so anyone who's a constituent probably has already received this information, but I will leave some additional flyers over there. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and we look forward to seeing everyone. I would like to offer a special thanks to Superintendent Jane Euster for opening up Half Moon Bay High School and allowing us to use the wonderful multi-use room that is there. I think we will have a good crowd. I know this is a very, very important issue to the coast side community, and we look forward to engaging with the representatives from these different agencies and finding out what can be done. And legislators have heard, you know, they've heard the issues, and it's time to try to take these on and fix what they can. So, thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you, Joan.
Any questions? I just want to say, please extend our thanks to Senator Hill and the other members of our legislative delegation. Really pleased with the response and look forward to participating, so thank you very much.
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. I'm looking forward to the meeting. Now, we're going to have a presentation about sustainable Half Moon Bay scholarships. Michaela McMahon, please.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, and Half Moon Bay community. The City of Half Moon Bay is excited to host this year's Earth Day celebration from April 19th from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. This year, it will be held at the Half Moon Bay Library with a new collaboration of local organizations and expanded services. Half Moon Bay invites you to the sixth annual Earth Day celebration with free compost, e-waste drop-off, and document treading brought to you by Republic Services. This is the scholarship? But it's all under the same banner.
Sorry. No, no. We're going with the scholarship.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. In the spirit of sustainability, we're actually hosting a sustainable HMD scholarship also brought to you by Republic Services. We would like to present the winner of the 2019 Sustainable HMD Scholarship tonight. This scholarship is for $1,000, and it awards a high school junior or senior Half Moon Bay student who shows commitment to making our community more sustainable. This year's topic asks students to discuss how they encourage source reduction in their high school or their community. As it is the first year, staff worked on developing the application essay prompt and outreach plan. Outreach included an article in the Half Moon Bay Review posting on various media platforms in a collaboration with high schools in the area. Applications were due on March 15th at 5:00 p.m. Mayor Warback, Monica from Republic Services, and John, Director of Public Works, met as a scholarship committee on April 4th to determine which student to award. I would now like to invite Republic Services to award the winner of the 2019 Sustainable Scholarship.
Thank you very much, Michaela. Mike Mahoney, General Manager, Republic Services of San Mateo County. Mr. Mayor, council members, as you know, we've been into our new franchise almost exactly a year and two weeks or so. One of the new items that we put forth when we went through the procurement process was the scholarship award, and on behalf of Republic Services here throughout San Mateo County and Half Moon Bay, I'm very pleased to be able to present this award to Ryan DeBrow. Ryan, why don't you come up? Thank you very much. Okay, I think somebody should take a picture here somewhere.
All right.
Yeah, we'll jump in. Got to do the political shake.
Harvey.
Do you want to get?
Welcome forward to.
I'll just say a couple words. Yeah, I'll just say a couple things, then you can jump in. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
You want to jump in the middle of this?
Sure.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. I just want to say real quickly that your family should be very proud of you. I've looked at your resume, and it's unbelievable, you know, for a guy your age. I was very, very impressed, the whole litany of working with the Parks Conservancy, Golden Gate, the Physics Club, the Pacifica Beach Cleanup. It's very, very impressive. You guys should be very, very proud. I think you're going to do very well in whatever you choose to do, so.
Thank you.
You want to say a couple words here?
Sure. All right. Hi, I just, thank you again. Thank you. I guess I thought I would talk about what I'm going to do next, so I'm going to Calholy officially next year, and I'm joining the, or I'm planning on joining the Prove Laboratory, which works on renewable, or just alternative energy vehicles, and they try to break world records with them. So, right now, they're building a solar-powered car that is going to beat the world's land speed record for the solar-powered car. Their next project is they're beating the world record for longest vehicle traveled on a single charge of, so electric car that can have a person in it and longest distance traveled, which I believe is, they're going for 1,400 miles, and I'm hoping I can work on that project, so, yeah.
Thank you. I would encourage everyone to read the essay in the program that you've implemented or helped implement at Half Moon Bay High School. You know, truly very impressive, and your leadership is going to serve you well.
Where can we see the essay?
Hello. We're happy to provide copies to you. Not a problem. We'll send them out to the full council. Thank you.
Well, I read the essay, and it's really incredible, so I was impressed the hell out of me, so it's really encouraging to know that our upcoming generation is as interested and working towards sustainability, because it's really important, and it was a wonderful essay, so thank you, Ryan. Now, we come to the part of the meeting that's supposed to be my announcements, and I found out that I am, in fact, the mayor from last week.
She's not here.
And before I begin, I wish that we realize that our, Deborah Penrose, council member Deborah Penrose, is recovering from surgery, and we all wish her well. She seems to be doing very well, and I'm sure she's going to be here on the May 7th meeting, but our thoughts go out to her in her recovery. The announcement that I have to make has to do with our Community Services Financial Assistance Grant Program. We're going to be accepting applications for the program, which is for nonprofits, starting now, and we'll be accepting applications up till May 31st. Local nonprofits can apply for grants to support their local activities and programs. Grant amounts will range between $5,000 and $25,000. That's more than last year. And if you're interested in applying, if you go to the Half Moon Bay website slash CSFA, that's the Community Services Financial Assistance Program, the applications are online there, and any questions that you might have, please direct them to Victor Haithan, our management analyst, and his contact information is on the website. So, we really are encouraging nonprofits who are doing good work for our community to apply for these grants. The city council will support you. The next item on the agenda is our city manager update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
We understand there were several communication issues. I know that we talked with Kevin Rose from the county OES about SMC Alert. So, all of these items will be discussed and the senator and assembly members will be asking these representatives what their plans are for solutions and how we can keep these things from happening again. So, I'd like to invite everyone here to attend. I've left a stack of flyers over there on the table. Everyone should have received an e-blast from either Senator Hill or Assemblymember Mullen or both. So, anyone who's a constituent probably has already received this information, but I will leave some additional flyers over there. And I'm happy to answer any questions and we look forward to seeing them. I would like to offer a special thanks to Superintendent Jane Euster for opening up Half Moon Bay High School and allowing us to use the wonderful multi-use room that is there. I think we will have a good crowd. I know this is a very, very important issue to the Coastside community and we look forward to engaging with the representatives from these different agencies and finding out what can be done. And legislators have heard, you know, they've heard the issues and it's time to try to take these on and fix what they can. So, thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you, Joan. Any questions?
I just want to say, please extend our thanks to Senator Hill and the other members of our legislative delegation. Really pleased with the response and look forward to participating. So, thank you very much.
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. I'm looking forward to the meeting. Now, we're going to have a presentation about sustainable Half Moon Bay scholarships. Michaela McMahon, please.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, and Half Moon Bay community. The city of Half Moon Bay is excited to host this year's Earth Day celebration from April 19th from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. This year, it will be held at the Half Moon Bay Library with a new collaboration of local organizations and expanded services. Half Moon Bay invites you to the sixth annual Earth Day celebration with free compost, e-waste drop-off, and document shredding brought to you by Republic Services.
Is this the scholarship?
But it's all under the same manager.
No, no. We're going with the scholarship.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. In the spirit of sustainability, we're actually hosting a sustainable HMD scholarship also brought to you by Republic Services. We would like to present the winner of the 2019 Sustainable HMD Scholarship tonight. This scholarship is for $1,000 and it awards a high school junior or senior Half Moon Bay student who shows commitment to making our community more sustainable. This year's topic asks students to discuss how they encourage source reduction in their high school or their community. As it is the first year, staff worked on developing the application, essay prompt, and outreach plan. Outreach included an article in the Half Moon Bay Review posting on various media platforms in a collaboration with high schools in the area. Applications were due on March 15th at 5:00 p.m. Mayor Rarback, Monica from Republic Services, and John, Director of Public Works, met as a scholarship committee on April 4th to determine which student to award. I would now like to invite Republic Services to award the winner of the 2019 Sustainable Scholarship.
Thank you very much, Michaela. Mike Mahoney, General Manager, Republic Services of San Mateo County. Mr. Mayor, council members, as you know, we've been into our new franchise almost exactly a year and two weeks or so. One of the new items that we put forth when we went through the procurement process was the scholarship award. And on behalf of Republic Services here throughout San Mateo County and Half Moon Bay, I'm very pleased to be able to present this award to Ryan DeBoe. Ryan, why don't you come up? Thank you very much. Okay, I think somebody should take a picture here somewhere.
All right.
Yeah, we'll jump in. Got to do the political shake.
Harvey.
Do you want to get?
Welcome forward to.
Say a couple of words?
Uh, I can't.
Yeah, I'll just say a couple things then you can jump in. Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
I just want to say real quickly that family should be very proud of you. I've looked at your resume and it's unbelievable, you know, for a guy your age. I was very, very impressed. The whole litany of working with the Parks Conservancy, Golden Gate, the Physics Club, the Pacifica Beach Cleanup. It's very, very impressive. You guys should be very, very proud. I think you're going to do very well in whatever you choose to do.
Thank you.
So, you want to say a couple of words here?
Sure.
Sure. Just go ahead.
All right. Hi, I just, thank you again. Thank you. I guess I thought I would talk about what I'm going to do next. So, I'm going to cop Holly officially next year. And I'm joining the, or I'm planning on joining the Prove Laboratory, which works on renewable or just alternative energy vehicles. And they try to break world records with them. So, right now, they're building a solar-powered car that is going to beat the world's land speed record for the solar-powered car. Their next project is they're beating the world record for longest vehicle traveled on a single charge of, so electric car that can have a person in it and longest distance traveled, which I believe is they're going for 1,400 miles. And I'm hoping I can work on that project. So, yeah.
Thank you. I would encourage everyone to read the essay and the program that you've implemented or helped implement at Half Moon Bay High School. You know, truly very impressive and your leadership is going to serve you well.
Where can we see the essay?
We're happy to provide copies to you. Not a problem. We'll send them out to the full council. Thank you.
Well, I read the essay and it's really incredible. So, I was impressed the hell out of me. So, it's really encouraging to know that our upcoming generation is as interested and working towards sustainability because it's really important and it was a wonderful essay. So, thank you, Ryan. Now, we come to the part of the meeting that's supposed to be my announcements and I found out that I am in fact the mayor from last week. She's not here. And before I begin, I wish that we realize that our, Deborah Penrose, Councilmember Deborah Penrose, is recovering from surgery and we all wish her well. She seems to be doing very well and I'm sure she's going to be here on the May 7th meeting, but our thoughts go out to her in her recovery. The announcement that I have to make has to do with our Community Services Financial Assistance Grant Program. We're going to be accepting applications for the program, which is for nonprofits, starting now and will be, will be accepting applications up till May 31st. Local nonprofits can apply for grants to support their local activities and programs. Grant amounts will range between $5,000 and $25,000. That's more than last year. And if you're interested in applying, if you go to the Half Moon Bay website slash CSFA, that's the Community Services Financial Assistance Program, the applications are online there. And any questions that you might have, please direct them to Victor Hyton, our management analyst, and his contact information is on the website. So, we really are encouraging nonprofits who are doing good work for our community to apply for these grants. The city council will support you. The next item on the agenda is our city manager update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We do have four or five announcements slash updates. I'll kick it off and then I'll kick it over to other staff. The first comment I want to make is just a couple of meetings that I plan to attend this week. Tomorrow night, I plan to attend the Harbor District Board Meeting and the night after that, I'll be filling in at the San Mateo County Emergency Services Council. That is a group that Councilmember Penrose usually attends. So, the reason I'll be attending those two meetings is, one, just to get out there and go to those kinds of meetings of our partners, and also to announce our Community Preparedness Day, which is coming up on May 4th. That's all I'll say about that right now because in a few minutes, we're going to have a full presentation on that event, so I don't want to steal that thunder. But we're trying to get the word out as every way we can. So, I'll be attending those meetings to make those announcements. My second comment is kind of feeds off the comments that Joan made about the upcoming town hall. They're calling Keeping the Coastside Connected, April 25th, and is also a bit of a precursor to what you're going to hear from Cory and staff about the Emergency Preparedness Day. So, based on the context that Joan gave about a series of events that have happened this year that kind of spurred this meeting and other conversations that we have had and announcements that we've made to your council and the community about what we've learned from those and actions that we're taking, I think it is important to note that there was an event more recently that I thought had a positive outcome. It may appear minor and to many people, they probably didn't even notice it, but that's the beauty of learning from experience. We put protocols into place. We then do our job and a lot of times, people then maybe don't even notice when then things go smoothly. So, on April 9th, there was an event that also closed routes into the city. There was an event where Caltrans and CHP personnel had to extricate a car that was down on the beach just south of the tunnel. And that was a planned operation, obviously a complex operation to bring a car up a cliff and one where they are concerned about safety and traffic control and everything else. So, we knew about it. I think they did a good job getting the word out initially, again, learning from their experiences. But then, as we know, things don't always go according to plan. And so, sure enough, the process took longer than they expected. Well, that stuff happens. It's really hard to pull a car up a cliff. So, I think they did everything right. They planned for it and then it went longer than they thought. And I think they ended up not, they expected to get it out by like 4:00. It was not removed until 7:00, 7:30. It was almost getting dark by the time they got the car out. By that time, we're into the commuting traffic, obviously. So, what I noticed, I was home by then later that evening and, you know, my, I was just watching all these texts go back and forth as all the parties were communicating with each other. So, five parties were communicating. Jessica, our Communication Director, was in contact with Caltrans all day long, talking to someone at their Transportation Management Center, which is kind of their brains for trying to manage which roads are closed and which ones are opened. We were then talking to CHP. Sal from the County Sheriff's was in the loop as well as PG&E. And as soon as they noticed that the operation was going to take longer than they thought, it was noticed that PG&E was still scheduled to do work on 92. Their permit allows that work to start at 7:30 and in spite of what the signs may have said out there, we believe they probably were going to start at 7:30. And through this communication protocol, the message was sent to PG&E to not start that work until the car was removed. And from what I understand, they then got the car out, PG&E put off starting until about 9:30. So, I just wanted to mention that because I think things are already happening and we really look forward to participating in the dialogue on April 25th. Next up is Matthew Chittister and he is going to make a short presentation on our library and the awards that are starting to roll in for that facility.
Good evening, members of council. As you know, last week or two weeks ago, Sustainable San Mateo County awarded the Half Moon Bay Library their 2019 Green Building Award. On April 4th, there was dinner held and the city, the county, the library system, the architect, and the builder were all honored for the Half Moon Bay Library as a sustainable project. I really quickly want to share a video with you that was prepared and provides a little bit of context around this and was presented at that awards banquet.
[inaudible]
I am honored to be a member of San Mateo County and honored to receive the 2019 Green Building Award from Sustainable San Mateo County and the American Institute of Architects in the future.
The library's mission is to create a green environment for everyone. We really crave our libraries and also want to provide research and exploration. We're so pleased that Half Moon Bay, the county of San Mateo, and the library system launches another 2025 project, 26,000 resources and disposable energy space. One of the initiatives we did in net zero energy building, 100% of its power needs are provided by solar panels.
One of the strategies we prioritize is waste, recycle, and renewable materials. And 80% of the waste we waste away was recycled into urban waste.
I'm Deborah Penrose, former mayor and current captain of the Half Moon Bay. Along with San Mateo County Library, Cassidy, and Northern Town Architects, your task is to prioritize the impact our community and your commitment to sustainability. This new library is a modern and inviting place for Americans and its owners. And it represents the forward-thinking commitment to the environment that is so important to act immediately. Our solar power cell and living room, natural ventilation, and building materials that then by chemical is low-energy and great feature in general by our dedication to the environment. We're so proud that our new library has been one this year's main building.
Our personal office is a remarkable library. The library is a sustainable system in many ways, natural lighting, water, and air. It shades, making microbrewers and energy, cost-effective electric heating and cooling systems, automatic ventilation, also providing some air quality. We've got solar panels to provide all of the building's life and energy needs, plus adding enough power to electric vehicles, charging stations, grow a lot of energy and help our climate work, and more than just materials. And we are still providing a professional, creative, successful district. On the exterior, we use natural materials to save our stone, covering the last eight year, and the house is only close to ten. To all our libraries, we have the Bay, the most shared, the Bay and the largest, the largest, the biggest.
Next, the education department involved in the discussion, who all deserve a piece of this 2019 Green Building Award.
This award is a great honor and it really exemplifies the collaboration between the city and the county of San Mateo and our wonderful library system that actually operates the library and runs all these great programs. And having been involved in that project from the beginning, I know that sustainability was always at the forefront of everyone's minds and the city and county took extra steps to make sure it really was innovative and was sustainable when always possible. So, should be very proud of that award. We've also been notified that the library has been awarded the American Institute of Architects and in combination with the American Library Association, Architecture Award for Libraries for 2019. And this is a prestigious award. It was based upon several factors, including the fact that the library has flexible spaces, its use of refined natural materials, the amount of natural lighting that it receives, and most importantly, the breathtaking views from all areas of the library. So, this is truly an international award and a great honor. Only six libraries in the country receive it every other year. So, this is a big deal and we'll keep you posted as we find out more about the award ceremony and such. So, we're grateful for the leadership that the council has shown in allowing us to bring such a great facility to the community and something that Half Moon Bay should be very proud of. Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Mayor, members of council. John Doughty is going to make some comments about an upcoming, another upcoming public meeting on April 24th. I think that'll be a busy day on the Poplar Beach Gateway Project.
So, we have put this out to the world and wanted to give another opportunity for folks to be aware of the upcoming open house with the library, at the library with the Parks and Rec Commission. That'll be the 24th, 6:00 p.m. start time. The order business is basically an open space, open house to look at some of the materials and ideas and thoughts that have come about from various aspects of trail design, trail concepts, and layouts, and then followed by presentation and hopefully additional public comment and thoughts about what we're doing and how we're moving forward. So, very excited. Paulette's here from the commission, so we're excited to have, for them to offer their time and building to us for this purpose. And this should be exciting and a great step toward getting the gateways plan moving forward. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our great, great intern, Michaela, who I failed to mention to her that we had changed the order of business, so that is on me. And Michaela is shared by Jessica and I and we fight over who gets her. She's a superstar and heading to law school in the fall as well, so all kinds of exciting things. So, Michaela, come on up.
So, I'm very excited to announce that this Friday is Earth Day and we, or Half Moon Bay is Earth Day. It's actually on the 22nd, but ours is on the 20th and it's going to be from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. This is the first year that we've decided to host it at the Half Moon Bay Library and we're expanding our services to include e-waste shredding and a compost giveaway as well as inviting new organizations to come and table that are all local. The organizations that will be in attendance include Peninsula Clean Energy, Sea Hugger, commute.org, San Mateo County Office of Sustainability, and other local homeschool groups that will be hosting children's activities that include projects that are recyclable materials, turning them into art. In collaboration with Republic, we will be providing these services and proof of residency is required. We hope that Half Moon Bay residents take advantage of this opportunity and come celebrate Earth Day with us this Friday. Thank you.
Congratulations, Michaela, on your future.
Yes, that is it.
There are no reportable actions from our closed session. Now, we're going to talk about the consent calendar. Do I have a, anybody wish to poll one of the two items?
I move that we adopt the Consent Calendar, Item 1A, waive reading of resolutions and ordinances. Item 1B, City Manager Claim Settlement Authority.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next item on our agenda is the Coastside Emergency Preparedness Day update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll go ahead and introduce this one as well as they come walking up. So, a lot of events coming up. We've got to keep track of all these. This one is our Community Preparedness Day. We've been talking about this for a while and this is for May 4th, not to be confused with a lot of the other events that you received promotion on tonight. With us tonight, we have Cory Stalker. She's in our HR division. She is also responsible for recruitment, but in her spare time, she's doing emergency management and she has been the point person in putting this event together, doing a fabulous job with a lot of help from other staff at City Hall. And then with her is Brian Mulver from County OES. Also here, unless he left, was Kevin Rose. Is Kevin still here? Yep. Hiding back there, also with County OES. And so, with that, I'll turn it over to Cory and Brian to make a short presentation on this event this year.
Thank you, Bob. So, Coastside Community Preparedness Day, just again to reiterate, May 4th from noon to 4:00 p.m. on Kelly Avenue, from Johnston Street to Perisma Street. All right. So, why are we having Coastside Preparedness Day? To start, it's a council priority and it's a community priority as well as the county.
Yes. And the county of San Mateo has hosted an event like this for over 14 years and on the bayside at the San Mateo County Event Center. And it's proven to be very, very successful to help people get prepared for disasters.
And Coastside Preparedness Day, it's centered around awareness to prepare the community for a potential disaster. Along with being, along with being a council priority, the new governor also has emergency preparedness as a priority. It's also a chance for subject matter experts and our volunteer organizations to share information and materials. Along with the tragedy of the California fires, people are realizing that you need to prepare for the events that we don't necessarily know are coming and we find out exactly what we need to prepare for.
That's correct. You know, one thing is the red flag that we hear for warnings for fire behavior is pretty extreme, but there's one more color that we're not really used to hearing and that's the purple flag warning. That's going to be the common thing in California pretty soon. That's the highest level of fire danger.
So, along with having Coastside Preparedness Day, just to allow a little bit of information to spread from each of our groups, we believe that it's important to bring awareness to our unique location. Being on the coast side, we do have an issue with evacuation and we do have to raise awareness along with people preparing to have shelter in place. We do believe that over half of the events that could happen on the coast side could cause for a shelter in place for approximately over 96 hours. So, we do want to encourage people to prepare go bags and prepare any sort of household items, prepare family, friends, pets for an upcoming situation. Another wonderful part of Coastside Preparedness Day will be volunteer opportunities. We have an amazing CERT group and we have the American Red Cross that will be there along with many other groups to allow for people to volunteer to get more information. At our net meeting, CERT did speak about the wonderful opportunities that they've had to talk to the community and the great amount of volunteers that they were getting. So, this would be another opportunity to chat with the community, get people involved on any level, to be coming to every CERT meeting or only coming to a few.
And this is a good time to announce SMC Alert. If anyone hasn't already subscribed to the app, SMC Alert will be available and we can explain it to people.
So, some of the attendees, along with the city of Half Moon Bay, San Mateo County Sheriff, we have Cal Fire. We're very lucky to have keep there, the American Red Cross, DART, our Disaster Air Resource Team, along with the Harbor, will be very lucky to have them there considering they are two of our largest resources on the coast side. CERT groups will be there, our Ham Radio Club Aries, and many other wonderful community organizations will be there.
We'll also have fire apparatus and other vehicles on show, on static display for many adults and mostly kids to enjoy and become that firefighter, police officer, parks worker in the future. Hope that'll inspire them.
So, some of our outreach efforts. I did do a brief interview with Jim Holly and Jim Henderson. They were generous enough to have me on KHMB on Monday, so that should be airing, he said, around the 23rd. And we have created a flyer, which is at the front for anybody interested. We have sent out emails, we'll be sending out mailers, we'll be posting on Nextdoor, we'll have, we already have information on the city website and the e-newsletter. And the San Mateo County has also been generous enough to promote the event as well. Their sheriff's PIO, the county PIO, all of their social media accounts and they too have sent out a bunch of emails.
And no, no presentation of mine escapes without a lesson to it. And if you've all taken a flight sooner or later, you'll see that the card in the pocket in front of you has information on how to evacuate an airplane. Well, this is something that you should take out and follow along while the flight attendant is giving you the instructions and mainly... is giving you the instructions, and mainly remember the closest exit may be behind you. Next, next. But when the emergency happens, you have to have the situational awareness to know what to do. So, if you've paid attention and looked at that card in, in the seat in front of you, you will know which direction is out and which is safe. This is a situational awareness that's all gone wrong. The, the bull rider had no idea it would end up this way, but anyhow, and he's suffering the consequence. Next, next slide. So, we always use the universal plan. Observe the situation, act decisively, and hope everything goes well.
Love it.
Thank you.
So, just to reiterate the details, it'll be Saturday, May 4th. The hours are from noon to 4:00 PM. Kelly Avenue from Parisma Street to Johnston Street. There will be traffic control through Main Street, so the street will be open. And there will be food and refreshments and a raffle at the end. And another event that'll be following Coastside Preparedness Day is the first concert in the park of the season. It'll be at Mac Dutra Plaza. There'll be a mariachi band performing from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, which goes with the Cinco de Mayo weekend. Any questions?
So, I don't know if you can answer the question as, as county staff, but so my SMC Alert seems to be sporadic. So, I get some, I don't get others. I don't know what to do about that.
I could, I could talk with you offline to find a solution.
And I just want to reiterate what I had said before about CERT is beginning to organize on a neighborhood by neighborhood and block by block basis, and I think that's really something that's going to make a big difference when the big one comes. So, you should be aware that CERT is a real asset for our community, and, and this event on the 4th sounds like a really wonderful way to find out more. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Also, just want to reiterate the connection between what we already talked about, which is keeping the coast side connected on April 25th. It's really hard to follow all the steps in disaster if the communication isn't right. So, these really go together, is what I'm trying to say, and, and definitely reiterate what's going on, on the, on the 4th at this event, but really getting people educated, you know? Disaster hits, and then you feel like you're in that bullfight, and you just fell off a bull, and all the rub, blood rushes out of your head, and you don't know what to do, at the point when you need it most. So, I think these are, it's great that these two events are closely related, and in time and in content, and I hope everyone can make both events. So, thank you very much for organizing all this. Appreciate it.
Thanks for making that connection for us, Robert. That's important, yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Moz Musrini, a city engineer, and I'm here with Evelyn Moran, our assistant engineer, and tonight we're going to be talking about the Green Infrastructure Program and bringing a little bit more information to our community about what we are doing. So, tonight's overview, we'll, we'll be talking a little bit about the Municipal Regional Stormwater Permit, or MRP for short. We'll talk a little bit about what green infrastructure is, what the Green Infrastructure Plan has, and what the update is in regards to, and then, of course, outreach and next steps on our, our road to implementation. So, the Municipal Regional Stormwater Permit requires development of the GI, of this Green Infrastructure Plan, or GI Plan for short. We must have these plans and policies in, in place by 2040 in, in order to start really reducing pollutants to our waterways. And by, and, and part of what we'll be doing, part of the requirements are to submit this document to the State Regional Water Quality Control Board by September of this year, and we'll talk a little bit more in, in this presentation on what else is going to be happening before we get to that point. Just, on this one, I just wanted to just highlight that the council priorities that were established in March of this year, the five major categories, sustainability is one of the large ones, and this program falls within that council priority. And with that, I'd like to give it to, give the floor to Evelyn to continue our presentation.
We began the process of green infrastructure planning in 2016, when the new permit came into effect. In 2017, the city council approved the work plan to develop the Green Infrastructure Plan. Green infrastructure, or GI for short, is the integration and design of infrastructure that utilizes natural processes to treat and manage stormwater runoff. It can also provide many other benefits, like reduction of flooding, climate change resilience, and neighborhood greening. Simply put, implementation of GI project, GI creates opportunity for projects that positively impact our community, our residents, and our environment. The GI Plan offers more options to developers, but does not add requirements for private development. The picture represents a completed GI project, which also incorporates some traffic calming elements to it.
Just, just to note, that's the Correia's Reconstruction Project out of the new library.
The, this figure represents the natural water cycle in an undeveloped condition. Rainwater has many opportunities to infiltrate waterways at a slower rate and without man-made This is an example of gray infrastructure. In a, in a traditional approach to development, stormwater is, stormwater is treated as a waste product. Impervious, I'm sorry, excuse me. Pervious surfaces are replaced with impervious surfaces. Rainwater runoff that previously soaked into the ground is quickly directed without treatment to the city's storm drain system, eventually into local waterways, which over time contribute to poor water quality. This is an example of green infrastructure. Green infrastructure restores the natural hydrological cycle by creating opportunities for infiltration and evapor transfer, transpiration. This slows and treats stormwater runoff. It is a long-term solution to reduce the amount of water pollution entering nearby waterways like Pillar Citos Creek by utilizing the natural systems such as water retention and absorption capabilities of vegetation and soil to treat urban runoff. Adopting and promoting the use of GI will ultimately lead to improved water quality. The GI Plan provides the strategy and foundation for implementation of GI projects, which include design and considerations for creating a balanced development in our community, sustainable, resilient, and healthy. To meet the goals of the MRP, there are three main approaches to implementing GI throughout San Mateo County: low-impact development, green streets and CIP projects, and regional The first on the list is low-impact development. This can be achieved by encouraging property owners to incorporate GI in their landscaping. Currently, applicants are required to incorporate LIDs in their projects, so, for example, rainwater The second on the list is green streets and capital improvement projects, primarily funded by local jurisdictions. With the inclusion of GI, projects may become eligible for local and state funds. Some examples are CCAG grant funds for Safe Routes to School, Bay Area Water Quality Improvement Funds, and State Prop 1 Funds. It is understood the city streets and CIP projects often face challenges like space constraints. The plan does acknowledge these. The Correia's Reconstruction Project, the first formal green infrastructure project completed by the city, is one example of GI implementation. There are several other projects, like Poplar Complete Street and Kelly Avenue and Highway 1 drainage improvements. They also incorporate GI into their design and help move the city away from the gray and into the green.
And I just want to add a little bit there, with some of the other projects that we have on this list, the Highway 1 South and Main Street Signalization Project, we are looking at incorporating green infrastructure through the ways of bio-retention, by slowing down, capturing some of that runoff that comes from the fire station and everything that's feeding behind it from the hillside, and ultimately slowing the water down, giving it a place to evapotrans, evapor transferate.
Evapor transpiration.
Say that three times fast.
Yeah.
And, and by, by doing so, also allows us to slow the stormwater down so that the water can get its, find its way to Wave Crest and down to the Seymour Channel. The Highway 1 North Main, Highway 1 Project in North Main Street, which includes the Terrace Avenue intersection improvements, that project also is looking at incorporating landscape areas to treat some of the stormwater runoff from the Highway 1, Highway 1 itself. So, again, we're utilizing existing areas that we have, that we, and, and turning it into something that allows us to treat the stormwater before it gets to the, the, the point control that we're trying to get, move away from. And of course, the Seymour Water Course Stabilization Project, that, in the, that project in itself is a green infrastructure project in that one of, one of the alternatives could be to pipe the, the entire length of that, but that's not the option that we're moving forward with. And so that in, in itself would be a green infrastructure project by, by stabilizing that, that water course and providing areas upstream to retain and allow infiltration.
Regional projects. So, agencies will pull money to develop regional projects to treat impervious areas and satisfy their specific target goals. While these regional projects do take time and effort for coordination, they generally provide additional benefits to the overall project, including increased cost efficiency to treat polluted areas within San Mateo County, potential for cost sharing among agencies. We have updated the city website to incorporate green infrastructure into it. The, the public can view completed and upcoming projects. It is a work in progress, so it'll be shifting once we get updated maps and the plan itself. So, the GI Plan will describe how the city will change processes and practices over time to convert from gray to green. Part of the plan is setting goals of impervious surface treated by green infrastructure. Currently, we are setting goals that would be achieved by 2040. The county has targets for treatment areas specific to reduction in PBCs and mercury, since most discharge to San Francisco Bay. Since the city drains to the ocean, we'll be looking for the plan to provide water quality improvements to receiving waters through treatment areas. GI is not pollutant-specific, so it will help with trash reduction, bacteria, coliform, all sorts of mercury, grease, oils, PBCs. As we look at watersheds that drain to our potential project areas, we will determine how much can be treated based on the project-level information.
Also, part of our Green Infrastructure Plan update is our, our other policies, and our community development department has been working to update our city's local coastal program and land use plan. The green infrastructure and stormwater is, is part of, few chapters of that document, the natural resources and some other pieces. The last chapter that has yet to be formally drafted and brought to the public, that we're currently working on, is the Public Works Chapter. That chapter will focus on our infrastructure, our sanitary sewer, potable water, transportation, and of course, stormwater. And we're using that opportunity to, to discuss the green infrastructure in more detail, and that'll be followed with a presentation to the Planning Commission sometime in this summer. We have a schedule at the end of this presentation, and we'll give you a little more information on that. But that's what we're looking to do, and that will give the community another opportunity to provide feedback to staff, and really tell us what they like and what they don't. Something else, something that we can do that others generally struggle with, that is, that helps us quite a bit, is the commu, the coastal development permit program, process. So, what this allows us to do is to request green infrastructure and stormwater management, best management practices in non-traditional applicants, such as schools. Generally, these, these entities do not require any local, local approvals as far as their development, but given that we're in a coastal community, we do have that one piece that others in the county struggle with. So, the theme, what's the theme of our green infrastructure plan? It's really no missed opportunities. How are we doing that? Well, we're, we're looking at identifying projects, prioritizing them, tracking and mapping, as you've seen in some examples here tonight. We, we want to make sure that the tools, the, the tools are in place to help educate, train, and prepare all stakeholders to act on these GI opportunities. We look at identifying locations and timeframes of potential projects, potential developments, and seeing where we can pool resources together. If there's a capital project adjacent to a private development, maybe there's an opportunity for a partnership, and really, really shape the area and really implement something that'll help water quality for, for a long time to come. There's going to be target, we'll, we'll look at incorporating targets for impervious surface retrofit. That is one of the single largest sources of pollutant runoff from our, for example, parking lots. You know, we have very concentrated flows, we have runoff from cars, oil, you know, brake pad residue. So, you get all these different pollutants that, that will find its way into a water course, and rather than going through the process of having some sort of a mechanical system, which requires a lot of maintenance and costs, we, we'll look at retrofitting those so that we can incorporate a local, smaller GI implementation through that. We also have a county-wide design guideline and specifications that, that is being worked on. This county document is important in that it would be a county-wide document that developers and applicants alike would get familiar with, and the intent of that is really to bring the costs down for implementation. We don't want this to be a burden or a challenge for folks to overcome. We want this to be an opportunity for folks to do the right thing, and one way to do that is to try to bring that economy of scale, and really helping to, to target our county-wide program standards, rather than trying to make it specific to each different agency. Another really internal piece is the integration with other plans, such as our local coastal program and land use plan, as well as our engineering and design standards, where feasible. Again, bringing green infrastructure into the conversation, making sure that the documents speak to each other, and that they're not, we're not into an area of what document supersedes what. Of course, with every good project comes the evaluation of funding options. One funding opportunity that we recently were successful in obtaining and implementing was the Safe Routes to School Green Infrastructure Grant through CCAG. And again, we're, you know, that was one pot of funding that really first started this conversation, but we're, we're going to continue looking for additional funding options, and, and we'll, we'll be bringing this information back to the council for additional conversation. And I, and I know this is last, but it's not in, in the least bit, lowest priority, is outreach and education. Again, I know this would be possible without educating not only city staff and local officials, but, but the people, really the, the general public, absolutely homeowners, business owners, developers, really getting this information out there and, and being, being able to help them achieve these goals without really having it seen as, as a large burden. There's been quite a bit of participation in the GI Plan. This, this, the county actually formed the Green Infrastructure Technical Advisory Committee back in 2016. This was right after the state mandate for the requirement for implementation of GI came into place. The county, the county and, and all the other stakeholders, the other jurisdictions, city Half Moon Bay included... The county and all the other stakeholders, the other jurisdictions, City Hafn Bay included, realized that the need for a collaborated effort was important, and so that group was formed at that point. Some of the other milestone dates was the development of some of the work plan here that you see before you, identifying what the opportunities are, what's really important for this plan to cover. Rather than having a quick reaction to the state mandate and requirement, really, how can we make this a functional program? And so in 2017, the city's consultant actually brought forward the work plan that we talked about in the previous with the no missed opportunities theme, and really looked at incorporating, really looked at incorporating a good work plan and a schedule to really make sure that we met the requirements and deadlines of the state, but also in a meaningful way for implementation. So that'll bring us to our next steps. So as we mentioned earlier, the Planning Commission, we're looking at bringing the Public Works Chapter for discussion, which would include some GI policies in the summer of 2019. We are, that's one way of making sure that we are tying this plan to other policies and also, of course, giving the community an opportunity to have a meaningful conversation and discussion about what that means for them. We're going to look at bringing the draft GI plan, which talks, which will actually be every, all the specific items that was mentioned on the previous slide. So one thing I forgot to mention here, the elements of the GI plan. So this plan, these are all the main chapter sections of this plan. And so what we will be doing in June or July of this year is bringing the document draft in its entirety for council review and consideration and discussion so that we can ensure that we integrate all the comments from the community as well as the council. So that, we're looking at doing that in June and July of this year. And then with the subsequent meeting, we'll look at coming back to council for formal adoption. And at that point, the goal would be to have an update of what we've modified and adjusted based on feedback from the community and the council. And that'll be, that'll bring us right in line with our mandated submittal to the state, which would be September of 2019. And then from there, the next step would be really starting to, continuing to implement GI. I don't want to say starting to implement because we've already started to implement it not only in our capital projects, but also by bringing it up to developments. Do you want to talk a little bit about the private development project that came up?
Yeah. So we have a home on Chesterfield that went through the entitlement process and now is in the building phase. And they incorporated a couple of curb cuts to drain into a bioswale on Chesterfield. So that was one way that the city is being proactive and putting these things out there and letting the property owners know that there's, these are other options. You don't have to put in a pipe and, you know, transport it that way. You can do other options.
Yeah, that's a great way to, that's one small project, but again, every little piece counts and it really helps us in curbing our source control concerns and water quality issues that we've seen. And again, we're going to look at continuing to apply GI strategies to our design and CIP projects, as well as looking at other existing plans and policies and updating as With that, that concludes our presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
I don't really have any questions. I mean, I think staff has nailed it, you know, done a really wonderful presentation here, so thank you for that. You know, I'm not sure the public is getting this, what's happening here yet. You know, infrastructure, not terribly sexy, you know, we think of pipes and roads and stuff like that. But this movement toward green infrastructure is actually, over time and cumulatively, like you were talking, is going to be transformative to our communities. It's going to require, these are bigger projects. They're multi-benefit projects. So because they have multiple components and produce multiple benefits, they require multiple funding sources and partnerships and coordination. But the end result is something that's transformative. It works with the landscape. You know, it prioritizes natural processes, which are really important on the bayside for the bay and where we live, you know, for the ocean and for the creeks and our watershed. So over time, Hafn Bay will look, you know, very different and is starting to look different. And it requires, you know, our staff and our elected officials, as well as the public to get educated to, you know, a new language and a new approach to these things. So, and it's all about adapting to climate change and, you know, protecting and increasing our water supply because we're leaving ground natural in many places so that groundwater can recharge and clean itself. It provides habitat as well. So I think we'll be pleased over time. There's a hefty price tag, but the state of California is making sure that there are multiple funding sources to address this. There's a new climate bond that'll be on the ballot probably 2020. SB 45, it'll provide about $5 billion, about half of it for wildfire protection and ecosystem restoration to prevent wildfires. And the rest of it is going to be about using green infrastructure to adapt to climate change. So lots of money. It's a good thing we have a grant writer now and a lobbyist on staff, and that wonderful staff is up to speed on the technology. There's also, there's other bills, like Assembly Member Mullen has one that would create a fund and Assembly Member Stone. So it's all about retrofitting our coastal areas to be more natural and sustainable over the long term. So this is actually very big stuff. It's just that we won't see it except on a cumulative basis, but pay attention. You see the library now and Correa Street, and you'll be seeing more with our major intersection improvements. But I think this is a really big deal, even though it might not sound like a big deal or sound kind of boring. It's really a big deal. So I'm glad we're going in this direction, and it wasn't all of our own initiative. It's coming, you know, because of circumstances beyond our control, but I think we're doing a good job seizing the moment, so thank you.
Yeah, first of all, Brian Corey, thanks very much for explaining what's a very complex, a lot of moving parts, a lot of different agencies, a lot of science and technology. I was wondering strategically, since this is a 21-year plan before we hope to get the results that we want, and we'll always be looking on an ongoing basis for funding from many of the sources that had been mentioned, are there certain measurements that we could take? Because it's always difficult to trace non-point source pollution. And as you know, about 18 months ago, there was a study showing the pollution of various beaches along the coast here. And a couple of beaches came out pretty rough in terms of the pollutants, and we have a group that measures that all the time. And they said it was very difficult to trace where that pollution was coming from, mostly from non-source pollutants. And GI is a terrific, you know, approach to hopefully reducing. So I'm just wondering if you think there'll be any specific measures? In other words, here we are now, here's where we'd like to be if we implement some of these GI solutions on certain projects, where we can actually show a measurable difference when some of these solutions are put into play so we can say, hey, grantors, we have some successful projects here. Here was the impact on our oceans, on groundwater, well water, et cetera. So we could prove that we've got some stuff that's working, and we'd like to continue those, these projects here, if that makes sense in part of the strategy.
It does, absolutely. Just to take a step back and just kind of talk a little bit about the MRP itself. So the way that it's written, it's actually, it all is related to San Francisco Bay. And so there's specific measures like PCBs and total dissolved solids that are the metrics for mercury, that are the metrics for most, for all of our agencies. Of course, Hafn Bay does not drain to San Francisco Bay into the ocean. So although we don't have the same metrics in place, we are using the opportunity of green infrastructure, as you mentioned, Councilman Brownstone, of knowing that it will reduce our pollutants. And whatever those pollutants are, it helps us with that. Now, that doesn't mean that we can't self-impose specific water quality measures. I know that, you know, for projects, for example, like the Seymour Channel, we've worked with the Resource Conservation District to do water quality monitoring and sampling. And so we can certainly look at implementing some sort of, another program to look at our water quality. It wouldn't be a requirement of the MRP at this point, but again, the state, this is broad, the version 2.0. Who's to say that the 3.0 version will not have requirements for ocean monitoring? In Monterey County, they actually, that's what they monitor. They monitor the total dissolved solids and pollutants that reach the ocean, the Pacific Ocean down there. So it's certainly something that will, could be coming down the pipeline, and we can look at different alternatives there. When we come with this CIP study session, one thing that we didn't mention here, but I'll mention now, is that we're looking at a program for green infrastructure as part of our capital improvement program. And so that, you know, that could be something that'll supplement some of our existing projects to help integrate GI. We could even look at expanding our program to incorporate water quality monitoring. So noted, at this point, it's not part of any of our state mandates, but again, it doesn't mean that we can't continue doing the right thing.
Thank you very much, Morris. You mentioned community input on the GI plan. Do you actually have any plans to have beside what the Planning Commission will be hearing to get community input?
We will. The Planning Commission will hear the Public Works Chapter, which will have some policies related to green infrastructure and stormwater. For, when we come back to City Council, we will have the draft green infrastructure plan. And what our plan is to do is to actually go through that document with the council. And we invite, we will invite folks to come and provide public comments at that time. And we will look at how we can get that draft document out for the public, if that's something we'd want to do. I'm more than happy to do that. I suspect we'll get a lot of comments from the usual folks that are very interested in green infrastructure and stormwater. But of course, we will welcome and encourage any outreach that we can get from folks. So we can look at plugging, one thing we didn't mention, so we have the Earth Day event coming up. We're going to be talking about green infrastructure and stormwater program at that one. We have quite a bit of outreach materials that we'll provide and educate our public, and we will, again, talk about this plan that's coming forward. The Coast Side Emergency Preparedness is another opportunity for us, although we're going to be focusing mostly on emergency preparedness, we'll still have some information and materials available for folks if they're interested to talk about stormwater quality. But those will be the major ways of getting more input from the community. And so what we'll do is we'll make sure that we notice it in advance and have that draft document ready for review.
That's really wonderful. Thank you. Any more questions? No. Thank you. We're going in the right direction. The next item on the agenda is the Construction Contract Award for the 2019 Sewer Point Repair Project.
Tonight we have the 2019 Sewer Point Repair Project. My name is Denise Hutton. I am Associate Engineer for the city and I'm Project Manager for this project. I'd like to present tonight some background and purpose of the project and also present the bids that we received for the project and recommend award for construction to the lowest bidder, Andrini Brothers, in the amount of $274,147 with an additional 15% contingency. The point repair locations were identified with a closed-circuit television video that was performed in 2012. The reports generated from the 2012 CCTV used a standardized method of evaluating the defects. The standardized method was created by NASCO. NASCO is the National Association of Sewer Service Companies. NASCO has created graded scales for overall pipe condition as well as a graded scale for the individual defects in a pipe. For overall pipe condition, NASCO uses a graded scale from 1 to 5, which you'll see later in the presentation. And for the individual pipe defects, they use a number of descriptive terms, which you see here. But this project is focused primarily on infiltration defects in our sewer collection system. Infiltration defects are those defects which allow high groundwater or stormwater to enter into our collection system. Over half of the 31 point repairs identified in this project are infiltration-related point So for the overall grading for our collection system, NASCO uses the grading scale of 1 through 5, 1 being excellent condition and 5 being needs immediate repair. So in 2013, the 2012 CCTV, the NASCO system graded our overall collection system as a grade 2. So overall, we're looking pretty, we're looking pretty good in our overall system. But the city continues to monitor our collection system to maintain a high overall grade, and that includes a smoke testing project that we have scheduled in 2019 and additional CCTV that we have scheduled in 2019. But for this project...
Is the number at 231 being taller or smaller?
Oh, there is audio. We have some infiltration videos that show water running into our system. These are videos from Kelly Avenue. This video is at Grand View. This is an infiltration gusher. This shows water, stormwater, running into our sewer system at these joint defects So here's some other photos of repairs that we'll be making through this project. One is a fracture with soil visible on Oak Street, and there's another photo of a defective tap on Johnston Street. These are other repairs that we will be doing with the project. So the locations of the point repairs are on the streets listed here. Dwight Avenue, there's several streets in the Grand View subdivision, significant work in Johnston Street and on Kelly Avenue. And all of these residents will be notified of the work that we'll be doing. We'll have public notification, and we don't anticipate any interruption in sewer service with the project. And by the way, this also shows what a point repair looks like. It's pretty simple. The contractor will cut out the defective section, it's usually about a 3 to 6-foot section, and replace the defect with PVC pipe. PVC pipe is attached with rubber gaskets with stainless steel couplings. So the bids were open on April 2nd, 2019. It was a very competitive bidding. We received bids from two local Hafn Bay contractors. The bids came in within 4% of each other. The low bid, of course, was Andrini Brothers, and the engineer's cost estimate was a little low for this project. So given the great benefit that this project will award for the city, we would recommend that the City Council authorize the city manager to award a construction contract to Andrini Brothers in a total amount of $274,147 and also include a contingency amount of 15%. I'm wondering if you have any questions? I'm wondering if you have any questions?
Just the obvious one. If you're about to check the sewer lines, why not wait until you have a more complete description of where the point repairs would be necessary, rather than rely on data from seven years ago?
So, there were some repairs done as a result of that 2012 CCTV. Only about 10 repairs out of the 40 or so identified. We have looked at the CCTV, and the pipes that are involved are overall in good condition. They're the two grade pipes. So, having these point repairs there is just continuing on information that we already know. The CCTV that we are performing in 2019 is for another area of the city. And the smoke testing is also in another area of the city that also identifies some defects, and, but we won't be doing CCTV on these particular locations. I think Maas has.
And just to add, so, we, these point repair areas, we wanted to make sure that we took care of these as part of this project. Now, what we're planning to do is having a point repair program, so we take care of these annually as they come up. So, that's what we're establishing moving forward. We had the ones that were already CCTVed, and it was large enough for a single project, so we decided to move forward with that in advance of additional survey.
So, we should expect an annual repair bill?
I think that's the direction that we'll be going, is that we'll be incrementally addressing different areas throughout the city with point repair projects, and manhole repair projects, manhole replacement projects throughout the city.
Just to add, that'll be something that we'll be presenting to the councils as part of our CIP study session.
Thank you.
Something we must do and worth every penny, and I'm glad we're establishing something that's a little more routine. Yeah, thank you.
I'm all for immediately repairing anything that's gushing in a sewer pipe, so thanks.
We do pay by the gallon for our sewer treatment, and we also have concerns about overflow issues, and to, you know, stop these infiltration runners is the goal.
Can I have a motion?
I move that we authorize the city manager to award and execute a construction contract for the 2019 Sewer Point Repair Project with Andrini Brothers in the total bid amount of $274,147, and approve an additional contingency amount not to exceed 15% of the contract amount, which comes to $41,122 for potential change orders. Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. The last item on the regular agenda is a discussion of Senate Bill 50.
I need to take a five-minute break.
Why don't we have a five-minute break? We'll meet back here at 20 to 9.
Thank you, Mayor Rabeck. Yes, this item was added to the agenda at the request of the City Council's Legislative Subcommittee to educate the council and the public on Senate Bill 50, which is a housing bill that was introduced by Senator Scott Wiener. So, the primary elements of the bill is that it would provide for housing near jobs-rich and high-transit areas. It also includes strong tenant protections to protect renters in vulnerable communities. Additionally, it sets requirements for equitable communities incentives that cities would have to implement if certain developments met certain requirements. So, high-quality bus corridor is essentially defined as a bus route with many users, probably something along with Deans Boulevard or something like that, and major transit stop any of our Caltrain, BART, and any ferry terminals. And jobs-rich areas will be defined by the Department of Housing and Community Development. If this bill is passed into legislation, they would publish a map that would be updated every five years that would designate the jobs-rich areas. High-opportunity areas would also be measured by employment density and job totals, or areas that would enable shorter commute distances for a high number of workers. Sensitive communities with, outside of the Bay Area will be designated, again, by HCD, but any of the Bay Area communities will be designated by MTC as a disadvantaged community, and there are certain requirements and allowances for tenant protections in sensitive communities. The equitable communities incentives include various variances to zoning requirements and parking requirements, density issues, floor area ratio. So, there's a whole slew of availability throughout the legislation that depending on different, different types of development of what would be possible. And so, those are the specific requirements for jobs-rich areas. When you get into transit-rich areas, all of the jobs-rich incentives apply, but then there are also additional allowances for parking, floor area ratio, and height. For example, if you're a quarter-mile within a high-transit area, then you could have height up to 55 feet. And there are also inclusionary requirements that the cities would have to include, and the projects would have to include. These would need to remain in place for 55 years for rental units, and 45 years for units for sale. And here's a table that shows some idea of it, but depending on the number of units would depend on which percentage needed to be low-income, very-low-income, or extremely-low-income. SB 50 would be an unfunded mandate, so there would be no funds provided to municipalities in implementing the legislation. And it was first introduced in December, and the last amendments were on March 11th. It was heard by the Senate Committee on Housing on April 2nd, and will be heard by the Senate Governance and Finance Committee on April 24th, next Wednesday. There are a lot of amendments expected still to come, so it's still sort of taking shape, and there are some competing bills that, there may be some back and forth between those bills to come to some kind of consensus between those. And from what the city can tell, in its current form, the legislation does not apply to us, being that we are not jobs-rich and do not have high transit. So, we, the city, has put this on our watch list in the past, and we're happy to continue doing so unless we hear otherwise from the council. And so, with that, I would turn it over to the council for any comments or questions.
That's just something worth keeping our eye on. I noticed at the end of the legislation, there's a list of various individuals, organizations that support it, and organizations, cities, towns that are against it, so it's just something we should keep our eye, to keep our pulse.
So, I have some concerns about it. I mean, I think it's great that the state wants to tackle what really is a housing crisis. We also have a surplus of jobs, and the jobs, to some extent, have created the crisis for housing. And one of the things I think needs to be done over time is engage employers to contribute, you know, their fair share to helping resolve the imbalance between jobs and housing. One of the things I'm concerned about with 50 is, I don't think it does enough to produce affordable housing. It produces a lot of housing if implemented as envisioned, but it allows in lieu fees, which I think, if we really want to produce affordable housing, we want that housing built. So, I have concerns that it goes, it doesn't do enough to provide for affordable housing in a variety of ways. I think- I think that the McGuire bill that was mentioned in the committee analysis--
SB 4.
--SB 4 from Senator McGuire actually takes a little bit of a different approach, and I think we ought to keep our eye on that bill as well. I kind of, there are things about that approach I like. It's a little less aggressive, I think a little, isn't quite in-your-face on the local control issue as SB 50, so I'd like us to watch, keep an eye on both bills, because I agree, I think it's going to evolve. There's probably going to be some consensus legislation, and there's a lot of opposition. The thing is, is that we're starting to run up against the deadline to get out of the House of Origin. So in the next, I'd say, next three or four weeks are going to be really critical for this bill, because it'll have to get to the Assembly if it has a hope of getting enrolled into the Governor. So I think a lot's going to be happening. All the more reason for our staff and our consultant to keep an eye on things and potentially, you know, bring us back updates at the May 7th meeting about how it's going. So, you know, again, it doesn't really affect us that much, but it has the potential to influence future legislation, so it's important to us from that point of view. City-county association of governments that I sit on for, as Half Moon Bay's representative, is like uniformly opposed. The California League of Cities, I think, has, it says opposed in the analysis, but I think they've done opposed and less amended? Right. I don't know what their recommended amendments are, I haven't seen those, but worth taking a look. If somebody's putting together amendments, I'd like to see those as well. So, you know, on one hand, we want to be supportive of our partners on CCG, but they're in a little bit of a different pickle over there. I mean, with El Camino and the 101, lots of transit-rich and jobs-rich corridors, so they're worried about local control, and I get that. That conceivably changes the character of those communities within a relatively short, you know, period of time, you know? Given that it could be 10 or 15 years, and you see the Grand Boulevard and vision for El Camino actually done. I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot going on already. And that's part of the argument of our fellow cities, is that they're actually doing quite a bit already to get housing built. Not much of it affordable, but housing units, dense housing units, multi-story buildings, things like that. So I think we just want to be careful in how we approach it, but I want us to watch, and I certainly want us to support the concept of building more housing, but we want to do it in a way that actually gets us what we need, and that's affordable units. So that's all I have to say about that, and I appreciate that staff is on the job. Thank you.
I agree pretty much with everything that Debbie just said. If the bill as currently written were implemented, there are some cities that would have to quadruple their population in the next 10 years or so. So I can understand why a lot of cities over the hill are really concerned, but I agree that we really need to keep an eye on it. It's undergoing evolution all the time, and I agree completely with Debbie that we really need to work towards affordable housing, and I'm not sure that SB 50 is the right direction. And as we've discussed, it really doesn't directly apply to us, but we should keep an eye on it as a potential for what's coming down the pike in terms of housing legislation. Okay? That concludes the regular agenda. Are there any items for future discussion or possible future agenda items?
I just want to, if there are any, you know, young women, you know, high school age, middle school age out there watching this meeting, we saw tonight up here in our dais among our staff two talented women engineers, and we have another one serving as our city attorney, you know? Totally in favor of STEM, totally pleased to see, you know, strong women on our staff, and it's possible for all you young women out there. I wish the YLI group was still here, but anyway, I just wanted to call attention to that, and, you know, it's good news for us.
I second that observation. Appreciate it.
Are there any city council reports?
So the mayor and I attended the City-County Association of Governments meeting last week. We attended the legislative committee meeting first, and of course, the entire discussion was about SB 50, and heard lots of storm and drawl, you know, in opposition to that bill. Then we had our regular meeting where we approved unanimously the joint powers authority agreement for the new entity that will supervise the Highway 101 Managed Lanes Project. So the Transportation Authority and the CCG Subcommittee that hammered this out worked very quickly with the legal team and produced what we think is a pretty good document going forward. Still left to be seen how San Mateo will actually profit from this. As you know, the Bay Area Infrastructure Financing Authority, which is MTC basically, will be managing it and operating it, well, no, operating it, will be managing it and getting the net revenue from that. And the vision is that there will be a lot of revenue and that we'll be able to subsidize better transit services and things like that. So we're on our way. That's all I have to report for that.
Just to add to that, I'm not sure where the revenue stream will eventually end up, but it will strongly, when they build that Highway 101 extra lane for commuting, it'll require three cars, three people per car instead of the two you see now, so more like the East Bay. And if you're familiar with East Bay coming across the bridges, it incredibly incentivizes ride-sharing, because it means people starting from Half Moon Bay will really want to be on that commute lane. You will be able to pay a toll, apparently, if you want to ride your own car, which I'm sure will be fairly expensive, I hope. And so, yeah, we hope that'll really incentivize much more ride-sharing up and over the hill, and we'll see all sorts of, I think, terrific impacts on our traffic commute in the mornings when that's done.
Debbie and I also attended the Progress Seminar in Monterey, and one of the sessions we attended had to do with sea level rise and resiliency, and Debbie pointed out the fact that somehow the county is really emphasizing sea level rise in San Francisco Bay and kind of ignoring all the good work they did about the vulnerabilities that we face in the ocean. So I think Dave Pine got the message, and I hope that we don't get short-changed when it comes to funding projects that will help us to work with sea level rise for the ocean as well as the bay.
Can I elaborate on that briefly?
Go for it.
So all this talk of this draft investment plan as part of this new flood resilience or sea level rise resiliency agency, no mention has been made about the vulnerability assessment that was already produced by the county, which balances out basically the bay and the coast. And so my question was, you know, will that vulnerability assessment, you know, inform this draft investment plan? I don't think they liked my question very much, but I think that's something we want to track. Like, is that plan making its way? That original vulnerability assessment making its way into the plan? Because that benefits us. That benefits the entire coast. There's the dump cleanup, there's this Sam sewer plant, there's things up there at the harbor, so we just want to keep our eye on how that shakes out, so.
And if I could add, Mr. Mayor and council members, as I recall, that new group has a certain membership, and the areas of the county were divided into three segments, and one is a coastal segment, which I believe includes Half Moon Bay, Pacifica, and Daly City. And so we want to do our best to make sure that we have representation on that group for the reasons cited, that the coastal challenges don't get lost in the shuffle of all the other cities kind of battling over money for what's going on on the Bay side.
We'll have to compete with Pacifica and Daly City.
Yep.
They are identified as the coastal entities, so this will require some, you know, tap dancing on our part, so.
Half Moon Bay is 3% of the county's population, so we have to make sure we get our voice heard, otherwise we will be drowned out. Is there anyone else who had any reports?
Mr. Mayor, I have one more announcement, if it's okay. With all the announcements of meetings coming up, we wanted to make sure one didn't get lost in the shuffle, and that is the late afternoon on May 4th after the Community Preparedness Day. Corey did mention it, but we just wanted to underscore it again. That is the first concert of our concert season. There are four concerts planned at MacDutra over the spring and summer, and then the finality, of course, at Carter Park. So that first one, again, Community Preparedness Day, 12 to 4. Go out, get something to eat, and then go to the San Francisco Mariachi Festival Band Other Entertainment, 5 to 7, at MacDutra. We just wanted to get another plug-in for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anybody else? This meeting is adjourned.